All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. See if you want to call the roll, please.
Moore, Mar.
Yeah.
Moody.
Yeah.
Engstrom.
Yeah.
Engelhardt.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand. Careful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four, perfection and approval of the agenda as it is printed. Is there a motion to that, please? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you say no, let's carry. Item five is public comment time. Anybody out there got anything to holler at us? Well, we're like getting tag teamed here. You have to tell us who you are, though. Laurel and Hardy didn't cut it.
Good evening. I'm Paula Inyers.
Mary Inker.
And we are members of the Park and School Recreation Board. And so tonight, um, we just wanted to update you on a project that we have been working on. And I think,
I tried, yeah. Okay.
I did. Okay. So, um, after meeting with playground reps, talking, um, to grandparents in town that take their grandchildren to other city-town parks, um, and our board and lengthy discussions, we have come up with a proposal, um, of a playground that we would like to put in Lowell's Park. So if you can see the proposal, um, you have any plans?
I think I have the quote there laid out for you, too.
And then I also did email, um, all the pictures of the playground equipment that is in that proposal. Okay. Um, that is what we have come up with. As you can see on that quote, there is insulation as part of that, and that is a costly part of that quote, which is not cheap. But the playground equipment that is there is outdated. We are out of compliance with some of the playground equipment that is there. So we felt that it was time that we did an upgrade to it. We have it laid out in three phases. It might say part one or part two on there.
Well, it just depends as far as what we can raise. I mean, we've talked about phases, but in the grant, we're, we're gonna apply personal grants to, to help, obviously, probably most of it. A lot of it, a lot of it. Um, but we talked about phases just because we have swings, swings area where the existing swings are, where the bigger existing, um, one by the Gagapowal pit. Um, that area is kind of before, like, the two to five-year-olds, like, the younger. And then there's down behind the basketball hoops will be more of an obstacle. Kind of the older, five to twelve, and then across the street, there'll be a, a bigger one, kind of a crawling obstacle ninja kind of.
That by the walking path when you're talking about across the street?
So if we had to do it in stages, but I know a lot of those grants, you kind of have to use it all in a certain timeframe. So it, it might be all, all in one. But we'll just have to see. We kind of picked out what we'd like, and I guess we have to get the stages, how to get the numbers, the next. But for you to look at it, do what you think. As far as the quote goes, um, she added the taxes, which should, she should have taken that out. So minus, that's almost $12,000 to take out, but, um, the city would have to help, um, her volunteers to take out the existing. There'd be some, you know, digging groundwork. We talked about benches and sidewalks for the ADA compliant area. So there'll be more on top of what's there, but, um, there's a city open spaces park type of a grant that, that we just would help with that, so. And we wanted to let y'all know that January 31st, the last Saturday of January, we're looking to, we had an initial fundraiser at the end of the swimming time at the pool, and now we're gonna have one at the end of January at, out at Tri-City. Um, with the, kind of, we're looking at a soup and chili supper with bingo possibly and a, a live auction. So.
Make sure you have the page that heavily, because.
All can attend and help, um, get the word out on that. That would be great.
And then, uh, what day is that on?
A Saturday afternoon, so.
I did email the fire, um, just a few minutes ago to Darcy so she could email it. The times are not on there, but, um, I will update that and send when we find the time for that. And we have started the process with our C D, um, with Lily and, um, Paul have worked some on a timeline of grants already. And that, you know, takes time, grants take time, and, and so we are starting with them somewhat, too.
So for your help, I know a lot of these times they get volunteer, you know, from the city to help put it together with that cut down on the cost, or?
It would. It was, it was an option. She did say we could do that, which is have to go first through insurance and get, inspected. So I don't know. We go that route, or you prefer to have them do it?
Now, when I look at this, you, you, you're wanting to do all of these. Is that correct? You want to do an area one, the one thing, and area two, the three, and area four, the four, five, whatever it is. Six, eight, whatever.
And we'll do renders and kind of have a, um, she, they'll do a kind of a drone through the whole park to see kind of where things are laid out, if you needed, wanted to know. The next, kind of, the next step.
And so each of the, each of these numbers is kind of consistent?
Yep.
Okay. So then if we add them all together, then, oh, yeah, there's.
That's what it comes to.
Well, some of that stuff is older than I am.
Sure.
So it's time we need, we have to, you know. There are nice areas. There are nice areas. I mean, if we would at least get rid of the stuff that's, uh, stay.
Yeah. Well, the section, um, down by the existing bigger pieces, the Gagapowal, in the middle, I guess, that's what's going to be the ADA compliant, so we have a sidewalk. Um, and that's gonna have the padding, the wheelchair stuff.
Oh, that's good.
And then it kind of has a, where you can wheel it, and it has more of the sensory stuff. You can, um, they can, look at that. And then it has a spinner that you put the wheelchair, you wheel that in and they can go around, so. So that section would have the ADA compliant, um, padding, and the rest of them would have the chips. So we didn't want to, because that's, that's, gets costly as well.
And then Lightner said, like, our next goal would be the open air spaces, so adding sidewalks and connecting those, like, the park areas, and new bathrooms, updating some of that, so.
So, I think for the time you're putting, uh, more places to hide the easter eggs for the Easter egg.
And so, um, we know that we're not on your agenda tonight, but, um, just asking for the approval to move ahead with our project.
And they can't take any action tonight.
You give them a lot to think about, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're not ordering anything. Do you have certain monies secured first, I assume?
Right, right.
Are those prices gonna be good for everyone with time, or?
Um, I know the quote has a certain time, but she, the gal I've been talking with, she knows that, I mean, she's done it, I think, with multiple different types of cities and, and knows that, you know, they have to have the money. It's not like we can loan the money from you and pay.
Right.
So, um, I'll get better timeframe once we know, I guess, what. If we can move forward, then we'll get a better timeframe. And then talk literally about the grants and, because those have to be, the monies have to be used, you know, in a certain timeframe, too. So I guess we'll see if we need to do it in phases, or how, how, if it works within a year. First, we talked about, you know, three summers. I don't, we don't know. How quickly we can get. Yeah.
Right. We know we gave you six minutes, because you were. Well, and I have to say, the thing about the parks in Postville, we get used, you know. You drive past some beautiful parks in other towns, and there's nobody on them, so.
Thanks, ladies. Anybody else from the public comments? All right, if not, we will go on to item six, and that's the old of the office. So Becky, I'll start with you, please. You want to stand up? Raise your right hand. Hi, say your name, please.
Hi, Rebecca Engelhardt.
Do solemnly, solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the Office of.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of City Council.
In Postville.
In Postville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As, as now and hereafter required, we, by the, required by law.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, Mary Engstrom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that, that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of City Council.
Discharge all the duties of City Council.
In Post.
In Postville.
As now or hereafter required.
As now or hereafter required.
By law.
By law.
Turn it around.
Aye.
Aye. Dennis King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the Office.
Discharge all duties of the Office.
Of Mayor. In Postville.
In Postville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. We'll get another four here. Okay, we will go on to item seven, and Mr. Brian Hinker, come on up. Brian's gonna talk about health insurance renewal. Tell him, tell us who you are, please.
All right, uh, Brian Hinker, work with Assured Partners. Uh, my office is out of decor, but we've got, got offices all over Iowa and beyond, but. Do, I've, I've got some copies, please.
Um, they got what we talked about in the packet, but if you have other copies.
Because ours are all listed.
Okay, yeah. You have one that Mayor has to sign.
They're, they're.
All right. Uh, so, so January 1st is our, our health insurance renewal, where it's a touch under the gun with the dead, uh, people we're getting. Crown the 15th with a, a final date of the 40th of the month. But we, I have met with the city, and I think all of the employees, including Mayor Koenig, came to a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We, we had our renewal from Walmart, if you look at the, kind of, this spreadsheet. Our current, current offering and the renewal offering are side by side. You will notice one slight change on the Walmart plans, uh, year over year. Walmart plans deductibles oftentimes will, will go up. Um, so the silver plan that we bought last year was a $6,000 deductible. It's moving to $6,250, um, for 2026. We buy a, uh, HSA-style plan, but the way that we've historically funded it down to what the employees pay disqualifies it from, from being a health savings account. Uh, but it is a very straightforward plan for the employees. There are no copays. It's a, just a re, uh, basically, the employees pay the charges. We've got an arrangement as to levels where the city reimburses, um, and so on. So we, we did look this year, the increase of, of 12% was higher than, than normal out of the Walmart kind of the, uh, under 50 market segment. So, uh, we looked at several different carriers. The one that came back that was competitive was, was Mid-America Associates. They've been on for, for quite some time, but relatively new to Iowa. Last year was the first year that they, that they came into the, into the state. My company has probably 10, 10 or so, uh, businesses that have under 50 employees with Mid-America. The, the rates were very competitive. We, we talked through, it, it would be a little, it would be a different setup than what we have today with the, with the reimbursements and things, um, with Mid-America, but, we, we talked about buying. I, I don't know how much you want me to go into it or see your guidance on our meeting.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, whatever we talked about. The meeting we had, kind of, our, our initial goal was just to, you know, obviously, the city pays a lot of money for this benefit for the employees. How can we, how can we get the most bang for our dollar, uh, as a city, for, and, and, and for the employees themselves? So we started at essentially a, a break-even number year over year from '25 to '26. What would it look like if, if, uh, if basically if the council said we are not going to increase the amount that we contribute? What, what would that look like to the, to the employee at, at that level? That, that was kind of our starting point. The, the plan we kind of dissected and presented was the first one, one here on the left, um, in this packet, to $2,000 single, maybe tied to $4,000 for family, a, a true HSA-style plan, uh, without, without any reimbursements back to the employee. So we would have, we would be able to get rid of the third-party administration and kind of simplify our plan. Uh, quite honestly, the, the employee, if you're a single on the plan, you're gonna pay the first $2,000 in claims for the calendar year. If you're family on the plan, you're gonna pay the first $4,000. Um, the, the part that, that excited us, or me as an insurance nerd presenting this, was that we were gonna be able to, with the savings, give the employees on a single plan, $3,500 into their health savings account. They, and they have $2,000 of risk. So, so that, that I thought was a, a positive. On the family plan, um, we were, again, $4,000 of risk. The employees were gonna get, in, in this proposal, they would get $5,500 into their health savings account. And my suggestion would be to be dispersed quarterly. Uh, we have people that, that leave employment. You, you would not, it would not be a good, you know, wise use of funds to give somebody $5,500 on January 1st if they leave. In February, they're, they're gone, and somebody else comes in. How do we backfill that? So our, my thought was that that would be a quarterly, uh, kind of dispersment. Uh, we took, we took a fair amount of questions at the meeting, um, and, and some good ones. You know, the Mid-America's certainly newer to Iowa. This is a different style plan. Uh, Crossing Rivers is not in network in Praydeshene at this point. Uh, folks asked, what are the differences? That there'll be some chiropractic differences potentially, um.
When, uh?
Uh, every hospital in the state of Iowa, Gunderson Health System, and Mayo's kind of always are generally our starting point unless it's a you gotta figure something out, or we're not gonna be able to offer insurance-type situation. So we didn't, we didn't cut, cut anything out in terms of hospital, providers. I believe, has the council received the letter that I saw? I've seen that that there's a feeling from, I don't know if that's employee side, or, or just union, or a combination of both, or?
Looked like all union members, okay, signed the letter.
Okay. Personally, I mean, I, I don't have a, a horse in the race. I did tell the group and, and Darcy, it was one of the reasons that I appreciated being named last year, um, as the agent, to be able to come and bring options where I, I'm gonna work with you with, if we choose Walmart, I'm gonna work with you if you choose Mid-America Associates. So from, from that standpoint.
So is there any benefit really? I mean, kind of, I know when I have to change insurance, it's a pain in the heiny. And personally, if I could stay on the same insurance forever, it'd be great. And I, I hate to see people moving from it, from what they're used to, and I, I'm sure, I, I hope that they've seen this, but, as other employees.
Yeah, they had a meeting. They met with him.
Yeah. I'm thinking that, I'm not sure. I just, I just think that maybe that people would prefer to stay with what they have.
I would 100% agree with that. In, in the perfect world, that's what we would, would always do.
So what's this deductible specialty?
Uh-huh, good question. So their plans have, if you, if you're on a specialty drug, um, well, currently, to, to their, their belief in the, in the underwriting that they do, we have nobody on a specialty drug. If they do, if they find one of those, they're gonna come back to us and say, we don't, we don't want you. Their, the, the specialty drug list is, is not huge, but they can.
Like, you know, tier, tier, uh, three or whatever, like, uh, if you have COPD, you have to have an antiviral or something.
Yeah, it'd be even great. Basically, if you want more special. Oh, well, probably if you go home and watch the nightly news, it's in the heat, if it's, if they're advertising on that or the Super Bowl. It's, those drugs typically range from $5,000 to $20,000 a month. A month. So it's not a, it's not a, I mean, it's not a huge, huge list, but it, it is real. Um, you know what?
And then some of those folks who go to ApoZenica and help.
That's. Yeah, that's true. That, that's true. Um, and that, that I, I think our, our, our proposal and my conversations were were of the nature, like, in this proposal, it's not the city saving money. You know, and we've, we've got groups that, that, that could say, hey, this is, just adding a $2,000 deductible is a pretty good plan. You know, we, we could have done that and just said, here's our new plan. Um, I, I think it's a I, I love it myself, but I also understand that I, I know how this works. I don't have anxiety regarding changing and other things. Nothing is ever the same, you know?
Right, changes every year.
Yeah. The, the other, the other aspect that I, that gives me confidence is, is that in the, well, one, in the Affordable Care Act, certain things, you know, certain things have to be covered. So that helps from a, you know, sales perspective. Um, the other thing with where we're at is we, we can always go back to Walmart and the, and the age rates. Um, you know, one, one of, of the 27. So in the old days, where everything was rated on your health, that would have probably been the biggest risk, is like, hey, great, we go, we change companies, we save money, pass to the employees, that's awesome. But what if next year we get a 70% increase? There's, there's the potential in the old days where there's nowhere to go. In the new, now, new, but it's almost 15 years from now. In the new model, you would go back to Walmart, and your rate is your age. If we've got seven people with cancer, your age 40, your rate is X. Doesn't matter if you've never been to the doctor, or, or you're on that $20,000 a month drug. Walmart has to take you back. So that's, that, that has helped quite a bit of, of movement back and forth. It isn't perfect. Lori can probably comment on that. Some of the, it, it's, it isn't easy to, to change, but we did, we did feel, I think, as and, and certainly me, I can't, I can't speak for anybody else. I felt like this is a really good offer for the, for the employees, but yet, at the end of the day, that's not, you know, that's not mine.
Well, there must have been something other than just mere change that the employees didn't. I mean, there's employees here.
Well, they're all here. They need to stand up, tell us.
Want to come up and speak to that effect for us, just to? Yeah. I see it both ways, being sitting on the county's health insurance committee. I'm not a big fan of change after getting burnt a couple of times, too, so saving is one thing, but change is a big thing.
So I'll go over the, uh, top three, because that's, that's what I can remember. Chris, actually. So when we look at, uh, we're, we're not just switching, we're switching from major Blue Cross Blue Shield to a third-party administrator, which is a little bit different animal, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there, I mean, we don't have data, uh, in Mid-America. They've only been in the state for a year. Even, you know, for a year, and you all know how insurance goes. By the time you're probably infected, you only have six months of bills that have gone through. So from my understanding, third-party administrators are more likely than Blue Cross Blue Shield to deny the charge after the fact, which would be my concern. You know, there's a forest that said you get either taking ambulances or a helicopter. And that was just one case I read about. It was a helicopter was, uh, flight was denied after, after the fact. So guy had a choice in that decision. He ended up with several factors, you know? That's the kind of thing that keeps me up. So that was just the newness of, uh, and we don't know that in America is, you know, what they're like. So that newness of, and they've only been in Iowa. The fact that their, uh, their net, in-network is smaller. Very deshene, so if you're traveling or whatever, you have to go to a hospital, your chances of having a bad, it's 50%. Yeah, it gets worse than that, too. So, so that's a concern. Um, I guess that's, uh, that's, those are the reasons. And then I'll just say, Blue Cross Blue Shield, I've been on it, and they have been. I didn't know that I've ever had overcharged or, or denied, you know, the time limit, just.
Anybody else? You, you want to say anything? No? There are comments from the council.
So it's more the reputation of the company that they're looking at. You know, I'm a numbers person. I'm like, 6,000, 2,000, what is a big deal here?
It's the record, plus again, third-party administration.
I don't know, it's, um, like you say, they're, they're new. They're new in town, in the state.
Well, that's, that, I mean, I, I agree with. I agree with everything you said. I mean, it's. They're. It's tough, it's tough. I mean, it's, it's not an easy decision. I, I guess where, where I, where I was coming from, or I'm coming from, from a consulting perspective and, and was really happy with. With, with really loading up the employees, you know? Like that, that, that was. That was awesome. Like I, I want. But these are the tough, tough calls.
Again, being where you and I have our history with the county, it's, you know, exactly that. And we had a. Well-known supposedly carrier that kind of cracked on us. Kind of left us hanging. A lot of us, me in particular, with a lot of costs. So, you know, we. I, I kind of have, I understand exactly where there, these guys are coming from. But in the same token, sitting in this chair, you know, I'm in a pickle too with having to, you know, try to save some dollars. But when you're dealing with people's health insurance, that's sometimes the one thing that keeps a lot of people working. When they've already got the ability to retire. Again, getting to be one of them myself, and it's the health insurance. So. You gotta have good health insurance too. You gotta, you gotta be able to trust it.
And i- it's tough because like to, for me to stay neutral too, guess what? Like the person's point, guess what's a lot easier for me? For me personally, that we say at home. The chances of, of error or those extra charges where we really got to pin our ears back and do. Like in companies' games, hundreds of hours of work, but I. I feel like these are the things we need to talk about every year because the. This world is crazy, uh, just in cost and, and everything else. So I can. I can appreciate every comment and I don't have the right answer. I'm just going to bring all the. Kind of my experience background and that stuff.
So if, if we were to stick with. Wellmark, it costs the city fifteen thousand dollars more than it did last year?
Well, that'd be just in premium. So then you've got an increase in deductible too. So remember we self-insure.
Is the city. Unlike the county, they're not, we're not able to get on like the, what the county's doing right now with the ISAP.
Correct.
It's only at a county level.
Yep.
ISAP.
Yep.
Is there such a, a thing that the cities are equivalent to?
Not that I'm aware of. It's. But it's bigger, smaller, yeah, smaller cities. It's always a struggle with, with cities. Good, if you're. Probably like a. That next year, not next year from us, but a Waterloo debut, you know, those, those bigger cities that have. A hundred plus employees or seventy-five or more likely have more. Options and programs, but it is tough with, with eleven people. There's. There's not a ton of premium going in with, with this fair long risk, so it's not a. Not really out there.
So with Wellmark, they don't have a health, that F A S, F A, what is it? F S H or?
HSA.
That, yeah, that saving, the health savings. They don't have that.
Uh, they do. We actually buy, uh, we buy an HSA. Does this sixty-two fifty plan is a, a health savings?
So what do they get for their, um? With Wellmark?
So, so really when you, when you purchase a, an HSA plan, you're not the, the business nor the employer required to put anything into it. Kind of our thing, our thinking with, with comparing these two quotes was. Holy smokes, we're saving money. Why don't we get the third party deal out of there, pass the money back to the people and, and they can just. They can use that savings to pay their claims or ideally if they have a good year, that, that money just rolls. We could do a. We could do a similar program of Wellmark. It would. It, it would take a little bit of time or more than the, no. This would be hard to accomplish by the time that our, our deadline is. Now that is certainly something. Next, you know, for next year, whether it's Mid-America, we redo the whole, we, we quote everybody and also come with a. You know, a, a style of plan like that.
The city paying that thirty, thirty five hundred dollars?
Yes. Yes. HSA.
That was, that was kind of our. That was my thinking to, to essentially to sweeten. Sweeten the pot or pass the money back. That's the easiest way to get the money back to the employees. And not have them pay taxes and ignore the city. But.
So when you met with them, did everybody understand what this was all about?
I think so. I think it was more, probably more so than I. Infra too much, Chris, but just a. The lack, like, I would, I would say you love, you love the thought, but it's the lack of confidence.
We appreciate that. We appreciate the, uh, looking for. It was, it just ultimately ends up the, it's, it's the risk of a third party administrator. And to me, insurance is, it's never been. The little stuff, a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. What keeps me out at night is the idea of that seventy-five thousand dollar bill coming through that. So called my home or whatever. You, you just. Chris, we need to come up here because we're not, you're not getting out. We appreciate the, first of all, we appreciate the ask. Uh, and then we, we appreciate, you know, it's looking at alternatives. We get it. Insurance is expensive and it gets more expensive every year. Groceries, everything else does as well. But at the end, you, you kind of look at the risk and we appreciate the offer, but. Going away from the known quality to something that is maybe. Maybe less good or maybe close to the fill, but everything points to, there's enough red flags to me. That I don't think it's worth that risk. And I think the feeling is the same. Yeah, yeah, that'd be a good idea. Yeah, yeah.
I can just. I guess I feel that I need to trust what, what our agent is telling us. We hire an agent for a reason. And if he's recommending this plan, then I feel that we need to put our trust into what he's telling us. Um, I did reach out to other cities. I did have Manona respond to me. They are on this plan. They've been very happy with it. Haven't had any issues with it. I guess my que, I, the other question I had is if we stay on the Wellmark plan and we do the, um, the self-insuring or we have the third party administering claims. We don't pay anything for that. Would there be a cost for that going forward?
Typically, it's typically it's. Right around seven dollars per, per member per month.
So we would have to start paying for that where this last year we didn't.
Correct.
So that's something else to consider too.
Yeah, so call it around eighty dollars.
I want to say it's like eighty-five or something. I feel like they send me a bill and then it says zero cop, zero. So we have eighty-five dollars a month and now admin two. Okay. I don't know, Matt, did you have any input?
I just go with the flow. Been in this system for a very long time in county government levels. It is what it is. You have changes and you gotta, you gotta go with it. You may not like it, but.
Bottom line then for, um, the Well, the Wellmark would be, um. Eleven thousand nine ninety-three sixty-eight. That is for. For what?
That's the monthly premium.
Monthly premium.
So you take that times, the increase of twelve percent times twelve, that's over fifteen thousand.
Right, right.
And that does not include the higher deductible that we have to self-insure, the higher two fifty. What would family be then?
That would be five hundred more.
Five hundred more.
And then, but, um, the, the Mid-American is sort of two or family thing, depending on what is level, you know, the family or whatever. We pay the deductible. They all, we pay the deductible.
PSP is that children?
Employees plus spouse.
Employee spouse is fifty, fifty years, like a five month.
Correct.
So we, our, our total risk, like, and this will not happen. Through a pandemic and it didn't happen. Seventy-five hun- hundred dollars of every single employee max out. Or that's how much more risk we have in the background. So. The, the way that our plan is structured, you'd maybe call it half, is that thirty-seven fifty? Likely in claims. That's, that's a rough estimate, but I would say historically that's about. Yeah, there's, that's something I don't, I don't really. Even mention, and then this is in my, in my opinion. Historically, so roughly a third of our premium for Mid-America and several other companies. Goes into a bucket to pay claims and that they track it separately. So call it, call it three thousand dollars a month goes into a claims bucket. Times twelve, thirty-six thousand dollars. If we had a fantastic year health-wise and we only had twenty thousand in claims out. We would, the city would get a check for half of the, the difference. They'd get a check for eight thousand dollars, but I. I think that's a terrible way to. To sell it because it's so. That's, who knows, you know? Yeah, in my opinion, you buy it because of the. You buy it because of the rates and, and the his, you know, the history or lack thereof, you know, that, that's the, not the play of life. We're going to do this.
Let's everybody, let's say we switched them and everybody hated it. Can you go back to Wellmark?
After a year.
Yeah, after the year.
Yep.
And I know they think if it's not broke, don't fix it. That's not what I was saying.
What was that, I think?
I said, they're thinking that the people that are, have this insurance are thinking, if it's not broke, don't fix it. They like what they're, what they have now.
Does the southern policy cover a lot more of their costs or maybe we have a little out-of-pocket expense regardless?
But we have the, we, we give them that savings.
The city, city makes up the difference.
And so I just, to get my math right. We're paying, city's paying or covering anyway, the difference in the deductibles. So the two fifty on a single.
Are we talking new or old?
Uh, either way, new, let's say. So the two fifty, the change times.
You mean the two thousand dollar deductible?
Um, well, the. The six thousand.
So, so we.
Oh, you're on Wellmark. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the deductible of six thousand right now is going to sixty-two.
Six thousand two fifty per single.
So the two fifty change. And there's, assuming we filled the position for JT and it was a single hypothetically. So seven employees at two fifty. And currently there's two family and two employee spouse. So that's twice. So that's five hundred, right?
Yep.
So we have four at five hundred. Correct?
Yep.
So if my math is right, four times five hundred is two thousand, ten, twelve months is twenty-four thousand. Plus the twenty-one hundred for the singles. So twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars, just the difference in the deductibles.
No, because don't times it by twelve. Because it's just one, like.
It's just units.
Yep. So it's not premium. So my math was seventy-five.
No, I think she's right. The way she's going through it, yeah.
No, okay. So we've got, we've got seven singles. So set take seven times two fifty.
Twenty-one hundred.
And then we've got five hundred times four. So my math was wrong. So twenty-five hundred plus two thousand. So I would say, so I, I don't know how I had seventy-five hundred, forty-five hundred, I would say divide that by. Fifty percent of our people will, will max out just as a, as a budgeted number. So we'd be looking at roughly a fif, you know, the fifteen thousand premium increase plus the. Call it a thousand dollars or a little plus in third party fees plus twenty-some, yeah, a little over two thousand. That, that is the real. That would be the number, you know, if. That would be really darn close to the number. And that's kind, that, that's where, that's where, in, in my math, that's where I got the money. To give the single person thirty-five hundred and the four families fifty-five hundred was from some of that savings and then. That we don't have to pay any claims out. That's, that's a big piece. So we kind of got out of that. We got, kind of got out of that. That game, that game.
What's the savings to this, to the city on this second plan? No savings. It's just the same expenses, budgeted out differently.
Si- uh, same expenses as this year. So not, not, not the Wellmark increase. So it depends on. You know, to find savings, but year over year, we have, we held the city contribution the same and, and essentially passed. The savings to the employees and their health savings accounts with our, kind of our. Method.
So Larry, instead of taking a twelve percent hit on Wellmark, this, this other policy is.
The same.
Same, same as we, right now.
And we're, and we're giving, and the employees get thirty-five hundred, single fifty-five hundred.
Which, which them pay for some of the expenses that the city paid for before. The city had to make up that.
Right, yeah, we were self-insuring, yeah.
What's the value of self-insuring?
You save money. Well, one, one in this world, Wellmark doesn't even offer a plan remotely close to how good our, our current plan is. That the city, their, their best plan.
That's right.
I think it's five thousand seven hundred dollars out of pocket. For to the employee.
Once you get to that, then you, but you don't usually get it.
Right, but, but we, for us to keep, for us to keep competitive benefits for the employees, we had to take. We had to essentially self-insure to buy it.
That's my question.
What do you think, Lori?
Well. I don't, that's why I was asking if I was doing my math right. Well, I don't, that's why I was asking if I was doing my math right, if I'm looking at it. It's the, the cost of the, of the two fifty times those eleven employees at their rates, in addition to that, that one thousand two hundred eighty-five forty-seven times twelve. The current increase.
Yeah.
Times twelve, which is fifteen thousand four twenty-six rounded up. So for the year, that's a forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars that the city's gotta come up with.
I would have to pay more at the fif- the fifteen number. The TPA number.
Another eighty-five months, so.
Plus, yeah, I didn't figure that.
The, the four thousand some and more risk, cut, divide that in half, so two, two thousand twenty-five hundred, fifteen hundred plus twenty-five hundred plus, or fifteen thousand four hundred plus premium increase plus the increase in risk, which I'll call twenty-five hundred dollars. Two thousand to twenty-five hundred, plus the, the, that admin fee for, for the third party. How much is that, Larry?
That's good.
Yeah.
So that's a thousand twenty.
So what is that, maybe eighteen, eighteen, uh, nineteen?
Eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty. Eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty.
Can we have a good, healthy group? You've worked your magic in other ways with the county with our numbers before.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, I, I don't know how the, the low goes. And it, it could go either way. I think everything that every, you know, that's been said is math and, and risk and unknown. I mean, we will, if, you know, we'll work, you know, we'll do what, what we have to do, but those unknown scares crap out of me too. But it's. Yeah, I don't love any, and I don't love any of them. I'm fighting a, a claim, uh, uh, the same, an ambulance claim for somebody who had cancer that I'd most believe that couldn't be stopped from northeast Iowa up to Mayo and Wellmark is fighting, I mean, it's just what
Right.
happens. And I would agree with you that it's, there's a higher likelihood that these will fight than, than a Wellmark, but everybody's fighting it now, just cause they're, everybody's.
Really surprised that Monona would carry Mid-American if they don't cover crossing rivers and bridge shit. Just because of the proximity.
Yeah.
It was not easy, but it.
Well, you have to, you have to look at the dollars.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, this isn't, this is a decision you folks gotta make, but you gotta remember where the hell's it coming from.
Considerably, you could change insurance company health insurance numbers every year.
Oh, absolutely, you can trade it just like your cell phone.
Yeah.
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 So don't fall in love with insurance, insurance.
Well, it's all about risk, you know, I mean. We let the cost of one ambulance ride scare us, you know.
Your feeling, is that what, you like what you have, or don't, don't fix it, but it's nineteen thousand dollar.
Yeah, you need to, if you're gonna speak, you have to go there because we're broadcasting.
Just to, if Larry, our, our three, our three concerns were, were, there's the issue of the network, and the network is smaller. Um, the big concern is, this is a third-party administrator, which are, they're not even regulated the same as like the Blue Cross, it's, I believe Blue Cross is regulated by the state, whereas third-party is, is not.
Yep, yep.
Um, so that's where the concern comes in. Um, when you look at the big chi- the big bills, the big life-changing bills that's gonna bankrupt you, the helicopter ride, you didn't ask for, but the doctor ordered, and the insurance company comes back half the tax in the times, and you end up with a seventy-five thousand dollar bill or more. A third-party, we don't know, we have, I wasn't able to get anything from Mid-America. We don't know what their denial rate is, but industry-wide, third-parties are known to more, be more likely to deny. So that was, that's the kind, that's the thing that really worries me. You can work all your life, and then all of a sudden, you have no fault of your own.
Yeah, you have to see that.
You are, and there's, you're right, there's no guarantee that, that won't happen with Wellmark. But in my years on across, we've had it, I've never seen them overcharged or, or denied. So it's that risk. There will always be that risk, but we feel like the risk with Blue Cross is less than with a third-party administrator, especially when this one had been in Iowa. A year, but effectively, we were saying, they've been here for a year, but by the time the billing gets through, you've probably received four, maybe five once.
They won't accept Mayo, they won't accept Mayo. Yep, yeah, Mayo, Gunderson, all the hospitals in Iowa not crossing rivers and some kind of disruption of the hard experience.
The Bachelor Mayo Rochester?
Yep, yep.
So what's the difference in cost for us? Bottom line, ev- everything.
You're looking at over eighteen thousand.
The difference of eighteen thousand, the difference of eighteen thousand? How can that be? If it's fifteen thousand, let's say.
Because, uh, it, it is, that is, it's eighteen thousand because we're giving, in, in our proposal, we're giving the employees floor, you have your calculator out.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-five hundred times seven.
Twenty-four five hundred.
Plus seventeen thousand.
Forty-one thousand five hundred.
That money is going into our employees' health savings accounts to, to pay their claims or hopefully not, not to enrolls with them. That, that was our.
So it's forty-one thousand five for the new one, and fifteen thousand a change for the, no.
I would add, it's a little bit different because of the, there's claims, it, it, it's kind of, it's, it's two different models, but the bottom line is, if, if the bottom line is that number.
Fifteen thousand more.
Well, but the eighteen thousand is, is gone, is an increase to the city under the same, same exact plan. The other plan, the city's neutral and our people get forty thousand dollars in HSA. That, I think, is the easiest way to look at the two.
Say that again, Laurie.
But if, if we stay as is, the, the city's cost would increase eighteen thousand or nineteen thousand dollars, that number we calculated.
All right, use that, yeah.
If we stayed the same, the city would be flat year over year, and our employees would get that, what was that number, Laurie's?
Forty-one thou-
Yeah.
Forty-one thousand five hundred.
That would go to essentially, to our employees, into their, into their health savings accounts.
About thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred in employees. If you haven't got it, all of it.
What is the third-party administrator is? Uh, replication of that?
We, we don't have, what kind of experience. I mean, Mid, Mid-America associates is, I think it's Liberty National is the paper. They, they've been around for a while, I mean, they've been around and it seems to be, you know, doing well in Michigan, Illinois, small kind of sentiment central.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they're theirs forever, it's theirs, it's theirs forever.
So question, why, why don't you feel, I guess, confidence or in, in the amount in the HSA, like, to be a cushion if it's in this Mid-America, goes belly up? Or doesn't give you the stability that you're looking for? Like, would that help you sleep at night, that you have that?
Well, again, we get back, it's, it's the, um, the denial of claims is, is the big one, and especially if you get a, advertising a helicopter ride, but it could be anything. You could be looking at six figures. It's the story of, you know, through, through no fault of your, your, your bank with a hospital. And, again, we appreciate what the city was offering here, it's just didn't feel that risk was something we wanted, we wanted to see.
And you don't think there'd be enough of a cushion, let's say, um, just in the Pacific, then you can go back the next year. I thought you would have in the health savings account, it was not enough of the.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, it's all, it's all, it's all a gamble, isn't it? I mean, if you work twenty years and you build it up, you could, you could have a lot there. But the idea of going one year and then going back was to say that the event doesn't happen in that, in that year.
Right.
So, yeah, that's, that is our, that is our concern.
There's, there's not much cushion in HSA for catastrophic.
And I guess I'm, I'm kind of old to one, when I look at insurance, to me, that's, that's the wor- it's insurance. You know, you're trying to ensure that you're not, thank um, so the, the small amounts are appreciated. If something like that.
The one thing right off the top, backtracking everything I've said earlier, but one thing off the top, with that being the case, you're saving forty-two fifty in deductible off the bat, too. If this, if, if the renewal for Wellmark went to sixty-two fifty as a out-of-pocket deductible, then times two as a family, which you're listed at. Um, this one was two thousand. Does that double as a family then too?
Well, but our buy-down.
Is, is structured different, like?
Yeah. What?
Well, just, I mean, approach it as a single then.
Yeah, and I don't think any of that, to me, is, is, is the concern of the.
Yeah, so if you remember your union contract, the employee can only pay seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible for single out-of-pocket. City has to make up the difference regardless. Fa- family, it's one thousand five hundred. That's all they can pay out-of-pocket for the union contract. No, helicopter rides on your own.
So you're kind of protected in that case too, out-of-pocket payments.
Yeah, that's a problem with insurance. Yeah, I guess, yeah, that, that is what it.
No.
Exactly.
And that could be either, either insurance or something else, I mean.
It, it could, but you just, again, you're gambling, you're looking at the odds.
I bought a cancer policy from, or life insurance underwriter, and I turned him in a diagnosis of breast cancer and they denied me.
Yeah, it shouldn't be current.
Uh, yeah, tell me about it, so.
You're not the person that would be there.
So, miserable.
And we do, we've been at this way.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we need to move, but they're asking questions and things, so, yeah, we, uh, this is a big decision.
That's always ugly, well, you know.
Well, it's, it's purely, it's purely, you can't speak, you can't speak good about insurance companies, hell, or even none of them work for anything. But it's like, but it, it, I don't care if you take offense to it or not. You can't, you tell me. How many years, how, how sustainable is this? You know, when you keep, they keep jacking this thing up, jacking this thing up, and i- i- this, this, this is not sustainable. I don't know where the hell it's going, and I hope, I hope to God that if, if, if you, if y'all, you're so in bed with one insurance company, I hope it works out. We, we just had a lady said that she had a kid, she had a policy, and they didn't do it. I play the odds every damn day, yeah, so it doesn't work with me. I mean, I, I just, this is the way it is, you know, but you've got to remember, folks, you've got to remember that this money doesn't fall right out of a tree. It doesn't work that way. And, and, you know, the, the, the city's taken pretty well, pretty good care of you. A- and, um, so, uh, whatever you guys decide, I mean, that's, that's your decision, you know? But I, I can't, I could never stand up there and say that this insurance company is gonna cover me. I could never do that. Well, you feel better with one than the other.
Margin.
Yeah, so. Excuse me?
And so there's a lot of history with the one we have. We have twenty-seven years of having solid coverage with it.
Okay.
And this is, I mean, this is one of our.
He needs to come up to the.
We, we need you to stand up here.
I'm Zach Stephens, the water operator. I just want to say that we've had really good luck with Wellmark, um, and it is a scary thought, knowing like, what if we don't get covered and we have to pay X amount of dollars out of pocket? I mean, that's a scary, scary thought for anyone, um, and this is one of the better benefits, I think, that keep employees at the city close to us, so. And so I, yes, I have.
Thank you.
Right, you're sure, I guess, that catastrophic thing? It'd be kind of like an umbrella kind of thing.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I'm sure somebody would sell you something, but, um, not that I'm aware of. Think it may exist. All right, well, you need to make a decision tonight.
So I'll pick and plead us here, so three eighty-nine ninety for his monthly premium. That's what his monthly premium, but he doesn't pay that because he can only pay according to the union.
He doesn't pay anything, he only, that he doesn't pay anything towards his premium. The city pays that one hundred percent.
So we.
Yes, we're just, yes. And then we self-insure those deductibles.
We pay their deductible.
All but seven fifty single, one thousand five hundred.
What we do for, for this, maybe we need to s- tell these folks what the city pays.
So the city pays one hundred percent of a single coverage, and grandfathered employees get a hundred percent family paid. If you've been hired after twenty-twelve, you pay the difference in a family plan. So we'll pay the single, you pay the difference in family. We self-insure. We have a six thousand dollar deductible for single, twelve, is it twelve thousand for family? On the, the Wellmark, we self-insure, so the employee only has to pay seven fifty out-of-pocket, single, one thousand five hundred, family. The city does that by using a third-party that does a reimbursement on their claims, and that's put right in their account up to those limits that we talked about. I think I looked at our self-insurance as of the first part of December, we've paid over twenty-seven thousand out-of-pocket for self-insurance so far this year.
We started in July.
January, it's January to December, yeah. Calendar year.
And how much of the deductible do we pay if they're not grandfathered in their name?
Um, family, the family pays one thousand five hundred out-of-pocket. Family, the family pays one thousand five hundred out-of-pocket.
And the grandfather was twelve, how many years of employee?
Um, anyone who was hired before twenty-twelve is grandfathered.
Is everybody grandfathered on your current?
No.
On our support families?
Um, there's just one employee that pays family. That's not grandfathered. They were hired after twenty-twelve.
So so that.
All the others are grandfathered.
Just to go through the math, so people know the math, that. In theory, that employee. I'll just use Darcy as an example. If Darcy was a new hire. On our, on our, if we renew with Wellmark, she's going to pay. The difference and call call it ha- eighteen hundred twenty-two versus is her premium, so to add her spouse would cost nine hundred. Right, or she's.
And that's a monthly premium.
That's monthly, and then on the. On the two thousand dollar plan to get five thousand five hundred dollars and pay. Thirteen hundred minus, call it minus six hundred. Seven hundred dollars instead of nine hundred and get fifty-five hundred dollars. I guess if you want my opinion. I I don't know how you're gonna. From a recruiting standpoint, who's going to join your family? When they have to pay the full boat and it keeps going up that much, like. I mean. You're getting, you got four thousand dollars out-of-pocket risk. Minus. Something that that hasn't happened to me in fifteen years. With any of the companies. Now, it has happened, we fought and and won, like, it's not to say, it's not to say it can't, but. I, I I would be, I I can't imagine that of that, if we took a vote of our employees privately, that all eleven would be like, no, I don't want. Thirty-five hundred dollars when my risk is two. I'm making fifteen hundred bucks guaranteed, even if I. Even if I don't, like, even if I hit my out-of-pocket, I gotta pay two thousand dollars out if I get. In a car accident or I break my wrist. My out-of-pocket max is two thousand dollars. You're giving me thirty-five hundred. You'll have the best plan. I have a hundred fifty groups. This will be the best plan. That's what I'm saying. Can I? Will do, if if we have an issue, I will fight. Until my fingernails bleed for our people, and I don't have a. My 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 horse in the race is like, I think we're, I think our people, we're leaving a ton of money on the table, like, I'd be. Frankly pissed if I was a younger employee, like, I don't go to the doctor that much, I'm leaving money on the table, so we can. Maybe. Have something covered, like, put the money in my pocket, thank. You guys for not putting it in the city's coffers, in in my professional opinion.
So, to make a decision, guys.
Well, I'll be. I'll be the bad guy. Because I've sat on enough insurance committees with the county for enough years to know. That sometimes you do have to take. The risk, even though you've had things that you felt comfortable with, and like Moose says, you can't sleep with risk. Um, I would make motion to take the Mid-American. Is it Mid-America, Mid-American?
Mid-American.
Associates, um, that first tier level funded of two thousand. Plan that was presented. Does health insurance premium. Primarily because of the savings, not because of, at this point in time, anything other than. That I'm a Walmart fan, but I gotta look at the dollars that come out of the coffers of the city, too.
Do you want to include the HSA payments?
And the HSA payments, thirty-five hundred, single, fifty-five hundred, family pay quarterly. Is that correct how you state it?
Alright, the motion is your second.
I know it's a risk. But life is a risk, you know, you walk out here and somebody claws in, and they don't have a chair, and you're just up a crack, you know, I just, I don't know.
Okay, anything else? Not all those in favor say aye. Oppose, say no.
Oh, I take that back. I'm going to say aye because even though I know that probably, let's see. Seven people out of the ten or eleven that is on this list would prefer not to go with Mid-America. But because I was elected by them, I kind of want to be on their side, but yet, on the other hand. I was elected to be, do rights for the city, and I think it's cost the city too much, otherwise I would have. Said no, so I apologize to anybody that I want. So, yes.
I think we're, as a city council, in this city, we're hanging our head on his ability to make it come through. That's what a pressure, but almost becomes a funny brand.
Got bloody fingernails.
My fight is is. It's good as it gets. To do absolutely everything.
The higher legal to fight it, that would be yours. Your, your job to fight it, attorney, it's your job to fight it because your premium, like, your money that's going to pay for the fighting of it.
If our, we have errors and omissions, we, you know. We don't have lawyers that go after a. Hospital that miss. You know, that coded something wrong, we we certainly fight side by side. Provided any and every documentation that we can. Our expertise and history, but I can't control, you know, we can't buy insurance to. To cover the one in the million.
I just hoping for the Mid-America does well for our employees. And I hope that they will love it and.
If I'm wrong, like, you know, I burden the the brunt of the backlash, if I'm right, I would back the path. No, I'm kidding, I just, but I've been in that position with the county, I've been on our county health insurance committee for. Fifteen, eighteen, twenty years. And I know. You sometimes you. Well, Wellmark has kind of nipped us in the butt enough times, too, that. They've, they haven't been playing nice either with numbers, and.
And I, I appreciate the comments without question.
And I agree a hundred percent with what you said, Chris, I do. It's, it's that twelve percent. They can do better, and I know they can, is what he said. They are making a buttload of money off a small community, and they're doing it to the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy. It's like I said, I I hope this company holds up to what they, they say they're doing and.
And and hopefully give give you guys peace and harmony. There's five companies like Mid-America that we've worked with historically. I don't know that we've had anybody who. Not renew outside of. The rate took it up way high and we had to go back to work. So I don't have an experience, and and not to say that it can't happen, but like. That is why you hired me. We have a broad background, multiple companies. Experience with all those, and we have business with all of them, that they, that hopefully we can use our leverage to, like, you can't. You know. They, they screw, they screw you over, they screw us over, if we don't sell it, and we tell the, the whole book of business and the whole state of Iowa that. Like, there's some checks and balances, but, but nothing in.
Cause you see where our twenty-plus years of loyalty got for rate increases. And that's what we told the county, too, our loyalty to Blue Cross got us nothing when it come to rates. We got a hundred plus employees, we're a larger group, and it got us squat.
You have a motion, a second, you need a vote, or the, call the vote. He has not yet, he's just, he hasn't done the only, well, yeah, you did.
I don't know if I asked, but I. Honestly, honestly, I I uh. I think I'm going to go with a show of hands, I I didn't hear. We're going to go with a show of hands, so we're going to start over on the vote. So all in favor, raise your hand.
Larry's a no?
Well, that passes.
And how soon do you need those applications? By tomorrow?
That would be ideal.
Okay.
Yeah, get ID cards on.
Yeah. Alright, so.
Alright, thank you all.
Those that haven't turned them in, please do, so.
Alright, let's go on to item eight and Paula.
Hi, my name is Paula Inyard, I'm the manager of the Farmers Market. Um, the Farmers Market started in twenty twenty, along with working with our C and D, which is where. Um, the market is currently located. There has been many events, live music, and great vendors. Last year, Northeast Iowa Telephone. Reached out wanting to partner together and host a megabyte of Postville, which was a smaller version of a piece of Postville. During this event, it became very obvious that the location of the Big Four Fairgrounds provides much more space and parking. I have visited with the Big Four Fairgrounds Board, and they're very supportive. Of having the Farmers Market at the Fairgrounds starting um, July twenty-sixth. So I'm here tonight asking permission for the council to use the Fairgrounds for the Farmers Market.
I don't have a problem with it, I went there when I was dead. And it was nice, we had a lot more vendors, too. Right, because there was a lot more space, and it was sheltered, most of them.
Water, shelter, everything.
Right, right.
And just the safety, the safety of um, the vendors and the people coming to the market. As well.
Even like the heat when it's so hot.
Right, right. And there is the. Platform for the live music to be on, and they would have a seat where they currently have the sun at the market. But our C and D has been so supportive, and they will continue to support the market as well, even with the location move. Our C and D does not charge me at all for insurance, they do not charge me for electricity. Um, rent space in the bad, and so I also, as a council, they, we would forewarn any of those expenses as well.
I say we let them use the Fairgrounds.
Um, and I, in talking with with the Fairgrounds Board, the water bill and the electric bill does go to them. And um, they will expect some reimbursement for that, which is understandable. But as far as like mowing the grass and insurance, and this is in the future, probably those expenses.
They say how much electricity they want, which is a minimal amount, I feel.
Yeah, it'd be very. Which would be no different, you know, I rent a porta potty, so I have all the expenses. And um, if the food vendors use the electricity. Um, we would, you know, deal with that. They use generators now, which are loaded, and so it'd be nice to have that, just to hurt those guys.
Well, kudos to you for growing it so big that we have to move, that, you know, that is really kind of a big thing of what's going on.
So we need a motion.
Now, I move, we move, I move, that's the market, we move out to the Fairgrounds.
For the discussion, not all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Oppose, say no. Jerry, go back. Thanks, Paula. Alright, item nine, Cory. Come on down.
So, um. Of course, thank you for the management coordinator, I know y'all, last year I was here. So uh, here this year to do my annual review of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, our Hazard Mitigation Plan is for twenty twenty-three, it's a five-year plan. That incorporates all uh, all six cities, board supervisors, and the three school districts, I actually was just earlier. This evening at the uh, school board meeting, uh, so what it is, obviously, it's about mitigation, it's basically looking for, trying to minimize risk. And hazards to the city of Fallsville, overall, to obviously jurisdictions throughout the uh, throughout the county of K. Uh, so like you, like you said, we, it's a five-year plan, every year I like to come out and actually do a review of the plan. Just so we don't approve it, gets this on the shelf, and we never look at it. Uh, so I'll kind of go through this kind of quick, uh, I won't go through anything line by line. But on the first page, when you turn in there, I just included the hazards that were basically identified and looked at. The state of Iowa has a Hazard Mitigation Plan, so the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee that's, that was formed. Uh, for this process, basically went through that, and when you go up to the back of that page there, as far, is the actual. List of hazards that were identified around the Key County, basically is broken down by high, medium, and low risk. On that, so basically, just kind of looking at uh, various factors of why those were put in there, uh, so. We look, when we look at those risks, they basically come up with the potential actions on that first page here, you'll see uh, the kind of grayish area. I didn't color print it because of all the cities I have to go through, it's a lot of ink. Uh, but basically, I'll go through each one of these real quick, but this basically, this, this uh, spreadsheet basically shows all of the actions that were identified. And grouped together for all the jurisdictions throughout the entire county, uh, and I just highlighted the ones that US, the city are participating in. So if you turn to page three, basically, the first thing, these are high-party actions, the first one just have participation in National Flood Insurance Program. With all the jurisdictions, the cities and the counties themselves, the school districts, don't be just kidding that. But basically, that's uh, makes you eligible for certain grants, so that's uh, something that's been done continually, it's pretty easy to do, obviously. The second one there is specific just to you guys as a city, you identify, basically, they acquire demolition or damage or nuisance. Uh, structures, I know that's something you've been doing throughout the time that I've been doing this, so again, um, and again. Um, understand that these actions are not things you have to do, uh, so again, there's no obligation to do, they're just identified as something that you either are doing. Would like to do or may potentially do in the near future, so a lot of the data in there, obviously, is just estimates and things like that, so, um, and. Not, like I said, I know you guys are working on that, if you flip over to page um, four. Which would be the next one here, these are medium, high-party actions, uh, this uh, basically, uh, you talk about maintaining enhancing water use. Distribution system, I'm not sure where you're on that, if that's something you've done, or something you're currently working on, or looking down the road. I don't know, um, I know, like, in New Orleans, they actually put in a new uh, new water treatment plan up there. Uh, Walkon's done the same thing, so I'm not sure if there's anything out there. Um, looking at potentially security-related uh, enhancement for your public facilities, uh, cameras, uh, things like that. Again, I know you, I think I saw a camera or this probably for your uh. On there, but again, if you have any comments on that, please let me know. Uh, obviously, a pursue a storm shelter option, we talked about that for the trailer park that you have on the north side of town. Obviously, anytime there's uh, if you use a federal grant, there's always this money obligation, that's usually fifteen percent of the cost. That would, if the city would actually look at doing something like that. Um, on there, there's obviously other ways to try and do that, but again. That usually, again, this will talk a little later when we talk about your siren thing, there's a fifteen percent usually on with federal grants. Uh, the second part there, as far as volunteer group, I've got a good volunteer group in the county, been working with them, so I got participation here from the city of Fallsville. Uh, Demore is part of that, so I appreciate that. So I got participation here from the city of Postville. Uh, Devora is part of that, so I appreciate that. And uh, again, uh, very happy with the group as we've moved forward, kind of, and are just completing their kind of first full year on that. Obviously, uh, looking at improving public's awareness of information as far as what's going on. I, I submit pay, uh, information to the uh, the postal hair that they can put in paper. Was actually at the, yesterday was at the uh, at the uh, fair that took place up in the Wellness Center, across some information up there. So obviously trying to look at doing some enhancements as far as how we write information about being prepared for disasters, weather-related events and things like that. So uh, sheltering wise, the last block there, um, one of the things that uh, I'm looking at start, or actually started, I haven't had a chance to continue with you, just some other projects, but looking at our sheltering plan for the county. And two things there, one of them would be short-term sheltering, like we had to do evacuation due to hazardous material incidents. Um, and then there would be long-term sheltering and say there was a tornado event where we lost a lot of housing, where people needed places to stay. They didn't have another place to stay. And actually, we're gonna be doing a uh, a review of that with Red Cross. Uh, we'll be working with the school on that. Trying to work with uh, find, but I'm also trying to find some other options on sheltering long-term because a lot of times, as I talk to the school board, they're in session nine months out of the year for school and then three months in the summer, usually they do maintenance. So a lot of times schools are not always the best facilities. Just trying to look at some other options here within the city. I know we've utilized Turner Hall for short-term. We had a small evacuation. There's a gas leak here, one part of town. I know a nursery, actually, they moved to Turner Hall for a short period of time while they got the gas leak fixed there and stuff. So on that. And then obviously, uh, looking at trying, I'm still working, looking at trying to work on the rail response plan as far as if we have derailment within the county. Obviously, there's not a lot that we can do in a derailment as far as response, given the scope of it. But part of what I want to do, the plan is provide the information of where they can set up, where they can stage, because a lot of our rail, especially when you get past Postville, you get along the river, there's not a lot of space out there for them to build, set up where they would actually be able to respond, set up their equipment if there was a major derailment. So providing them those kind of information and just obviously how we incorporate that into our evacuation plan and sheltering. The last thing I'll talk about is actually a new, uh, if you turn to the last page, is a new uh, like I said, we can add actions to this plan. We did this with you guys. We also did this with Walk On. When both your jurisdictions wanted to pursue funding for a siren system to replace your current ones. You guys will look, interplace up to two sirens, Walk On's looking at a whole four. Um, had to report right now, the actual uh, the grants moving forward is actually at what's called a FEMA review stage right now. Doesn't mean it's approved, doesn't mean it's going to improve, but it's going through all the steps. So it's good to be at the FEMA level, so they are actually looking through it. Uh, with Walk On, we had to provide some additional information, have everything back from your package. But again, it's just part of the, it's a very long-term uh, process. But again, if it's up FEMA, that means it's getting to the state, what they require and basically if the funds become available through this grant and then the project's approved by the state, because basically what happens is the state decides who gets approval. The state basically gets the money. They basically break it up between what they have projects. And then basically, it'll be hopefully something that'll move forward very quickly. And again, in that project, you guys would have a fifteen percent responsibility for the grant cost. The Fed's covered twenty-five percent, the state covers ten and then the local, this local uh, just covers fifteen percent. So it's a pretty good deal if it gets approved. Uh, because again, you know, based on what normally a siren system on itself, usually possible twenty-five grand. I don't remember off the top of my head how much we had. A lot is here.
I'd say we were in six.
Sixty some thousand dollars. So you're looking, you know, about twelve, twelve thousand dollars on the city to get two new sirens systems. Where again, normally for that would be about sixty thousand if you didn't have the grants on that. Fortunately, you're not in a position where you need the sirens today. So like I said, a lot of these grants, especially in the Fed side, there's, there's, you need to wait a little bit. Water will take about two and a half years for them to get their siren system approved. And they were fortunate because they got it during uh, COVID, so they got a hundred percent coverage. Uh, that's when money was a little bit more flowing, that's what happened. But they only built one siren and so it was a pretty good deal. So that's like I said, uh, feel free to read through this. Like I said, um, I'll, I'll obviously keep you guys updated. Again, uh, as far as the grant, um, appreciate our work, work for Darcy on that. You guys, like I said, you want to get hold of me, otherwise, uh, if you don't have any questions, I appreciate it. And also we'll see you next year. And like you said, if something would come up, we can definitely add to this. It was a pretty easy process, took barely a day to add your advices to the state requirement. So, alright, thank you.
Thanks Cory. Okay, let's go on to item ten. Jeff, it's not here, is he? We want to act on that or?
He gave us a check.
Yeah. Yeah, so uh, so Jeff, yeah, Allison, you know, he put that new house in up here across the tracks on Murdock, where is it?
Murdock.
Yep.
That's a nice looking house.
Home spray.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's asking to waive the cost of a hookup for the water in the sewer, right? And uh, what was?
Be a total of five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Five hundred sewer, twenty-five waters, the hookup fees.
Will he cover the cost of removing the lid and replacing that, that pipe that's in there?
That pipe. To his.
Right. So is he willing to cover the cost of removing and replacing?
Yeah, he'll have to. Yeah, that's on him.
That, yeah. So he's willing to.
The water pipe is wet. So.
No, go ahead.
Um, I was just trying. So if that, that sewer service location, if it's, if it isn't where he expects it to be, like they put it was like ten feet to the waist or something, whatever. Um, is he also willing to do the extra work that will be required to cover that?
I don't know on sewer portion of it.
I think he was successful because Chris signed off on that. I think he was successful, yeah.
How much was it? Five hundred dollars?
Five hundred and twenty-five dollars would be the hookup fees.
You think we're setting a precedent if we did that?
We've done other new development homes for hookup. I think Trevor Seibert was the last one you gave upon. It's like depth of service or something. It's been a while.
I believe we weigh these two hookups.
Motion by Larry, Sarah Second. All those in favor say aye? Who say no? Alright, that's Carrie. Alright, let's go on to item eleven, parade requests.
Hi, Mandy Fazan. I moved here to Iowa from England, coming up to four years. Thank you. It was a big shock. We came February, it was cold. Um, but, so we came here right the, the year after we came, it was Hanukkah, the Jewish holiday. And there wasn't much going on for the community. There was one menorah lighting they have in the corner of the city by Passordo. Um, we did in England, we have, we were youth directors um, out there in Leeds. We did a parade uh, on menorah and they have it all over America. They have it, probably started in New York. In New York, it's huge, it's two hundred cars. So we put together, we ordered a few car menorahs. My friend Yasi Feldman also, he, he arranged it together. We had like ten, fifteen cars for first year. Um, the second year, we had probably twenty cars with the menorah lights on, on top. Um, and then police came over to us and said, we should probably have permission. The year after that, I, last year was, I went to the police station a few times. I tried calling. I think they responded. I didn't leave any messages. Um, until I phoned into, I think it was JT, JT, TJ, JT, I think. Um, and he says, you keep into all the laws of the road. You're driving just through town. Um, it shouldn't be any problem, but next year you should probably have permission from City Hall or just to let them know, I don't know what's required. So I'm here tonight. We do have a map. I can email the city map. It's just around Postville. Um, and it's just music, early six thirty, I believe we started last year. Um, we'd like to do it this Sunday night, coming up the first night of Hanukkah. Um, I know it's short notice.
So what, are you gonna be going on the highway or?
No, 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 just in city limits. We keep the laws of the, the road laws. We drive stop, no stop signs. With just music and, and um, if the police want to come and, and block up the roads, but it's not needed.
Is that gonna go up to where you do the light, the Hanukkah, the, the menorah, is that?
No, that's gonna be the following Sunday, the eighth night.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-first. This is gonna be, what people believe, the first night. Um, and it's just for the kids and especially the message of Hanukkah is about light and and it's actually the origin, original from freedom to religion, um, Greeks, Asian Greek. So.
Comments, Keith?
Uh, you said this is December fourteenth? Yeah. Sunday?
Yeah.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, six thirty lineup by the center.
I know last year there was issues. Um, I know the year before there was issues. I don't have an issue with it, other than we're gonna need a, a set time from beginning to end. Like, how long are you looking at? Are you looking at just like six thirty to seven or six thirty, seven thirty or?
Six thirty to seven, seven fifteen max.
I mean.
I wouldn't say longer.
Because I don't last.
But last year we were there, it's done by seven fifteen and we left a few minutes late. We might have something to, I may ask what they should have last year.
Well, I don't, because last year, it was after the fact, there were still other vehicles that were still doing it late at night.
They did it on their own.
But yeah, they were doing, it had nothing to do with you, your group, but, but there was a certain few that was still part of the group in the beginning that later on, they kept on doing it later on in the evening and.
So if you just tell them, you know, that when it's over with, it's over, then I don't think we're gonna have a problem with it.
No, that's where I'm getting at. We just need a set time, you know, six thirty, seven thirty, and then after that, we're good to go. And as long as you, they obey the traffic laws of, of the stop signs, stopping and whatever, we're good.
If I remember correctly, not the menorah shouldn't flash. I believe the police mentioned that.
Right, yeah. Gotta be solid color. You gotta be solid color, yeah. You don't want to have the flashing, yeah.
And once the move, once seven thirty comes, there should be no loud music.
Right.
I just put a message out like we did last year.
But I would like.
I didn't even know that happened.
Right, no, that's understandable, but I would like to see the, the map that you got. Your route anyway, so I can let my officers know that night. Because it'd be one officer on and that way they know what the route you're gonna be taking. Now, are you including the fire department? Are they gonna be?
Would like to.
Okay.
I haven't invited, I haven't asked the chief yet. Um, we'd like to ask the ambulance as well, um, to join if it wasn't mine. I was gonna wait till tonight to, I know it's at last minute, but.
Right, no, that's.
Yasi followed the ambulance to here. If they left, he could take one and I'm part of the fire, they left, I'm a staff, the chief.
So we need a motion? I move that we allow the parade for Hanukkah on the fourteenth from six thirty to seven thirty in town.
Second? For the discussion, not all those in favor say aye? Who say no? Say no.
Thank you so much for what you do.
We'll just put it out on Facebook.
Facebook and the city page.
Once we see the maps.
Yeah.
Alright, let's go on to item twelve and ordinance number seven zero seven dash two five. An ordinance amending chapter one fifty-five housing code of the city code of ordinances.
This is just making the ordinance. This is not the policy for how we're going to implement.
Correct, yeah.
Right. Yes, yeah. That's what it is. So everybody kind of understand that?
So you ready to do your first reading? I need a motion.
Need a motion.
At the first reading. Ordinance number seven zero seven dash twenty-five. An ordinance amending chapter one fifty-five, the housing code of the city code of ordinances.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Right.
Do you want it to go farther for a second reading or do you want to wait?
The second and third reading, because this is what we decided on making a change.
I'd like to waive it and then use the time discussing the policy.
Are you making a motion to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the second.
Waive the second, third and final adopt.
And final.
Second?
I'll second it.
Whatever you're.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifth tier, eleven or twelve? Okay, then we'll go on to thirteen, uh, plans of inspection, the Postville Housing Code Discussion. Uh, we've got two ladies there on that. Devora and Becky, uh, if you have one explain sometimes.
One of the things I've, Devora did a really good job of explaining everything, I think, was this. Were you in that?
No, it was Neville.
Hershey was.
Yeah.
Um, I wasn't sure. Anyway, um, she did a good job of explaining everything, but, and I do think that we came to a good agreement to have, um, I think Hershey was going to get a group of uh, renters, of people that are landlords together and kind of coordinate everything what their wishes are and to see if we can come up with a meeting with us and then that group. What else is that we?
I think it was very, but we heard some more perspective from the landlord side. And I think we spent some time, I guess, explaining that a lot of the responsibility of their concerns. We couldn't do anything about, they have to do it.
Right.
But, but I think, um, I think we did address their concerns by giving them several suggestions that they could work on in their committee. And Hershey said he would get back to us once they establish a committee. And it would be very nice if that committee also has the, an addition of some tenant representation, so they can all work together. But um, some of the, as far as the policy goes, some of the ways that I think we addressed their concerns and then Darcy sent some information to Hershey after. One of them was, um, like Trevor was talking about not having it all implemented at once, maybe having phases. So I suggested that we take Father Coolidge's idea of dividing the city and the rental properties within those zones, dividing them into zones and doing like a three-year cycle. So the, the inspections would be required every three years, not every two years. And they wouldn't all have to be required to do it at once. We could start with zone one. Let the landlords know that those properties within zone one have three months or whatever it is to do it and then move to zone two. So, and it can be on a three-year cycle, so it's kind of phasing that it's getting them used to it. And by the time the three years are done, we're back to zone one, which is when they're required to do it again. So that would be one way of maybe staggering the implementation of it. Yeah, and then, um, I have found several websites and programs in our area that, um, that help them vet tenants and clarify tenants' rights and responsibilities. And um, Iowa State University and Upper, it's University, yeah, Upper Florida Land and um, some websites, um, for very minimal fee, they can vet their tenants. They can explain in different languages, tenants' rights and responsibilities. They're working together. And they can vet the tenants and do as Trevor said, share that information among each other. That's nothing we can really do. And then, um, and then, um, the other sort of, I guess, suggestion that I had was either as a committee, they can maybe pick two local firemen or two local firemen, Trevor had suggested, you know, using firemen to do the home inspections and save their money. So maybe as, as a landlord committee, they can come and sponsor the certification program for two of our firemen. And then as long as they're certified with the state of Iowa and their home inspectors, you know, local, that would, um, help save, you know.
Save them money.
See the rapids, yes, yes. And then there was another idea, but it would maybe take a bit much to implement, but it's worth thinking about or discussing is like a hybrid inspection process where we would get, there would basically be a self-inspection process. By each landlord would maybe inspect his own property using the checklist and the guidelines that we, we already have on code and using photo proof. They could prove to us that they tricked us within a reasonable timeframe. And then once that's confirmed that there's no forgery or lies going on, we could give that maybe to our housing inspector, Dave Palas, to verify that the information is correct and those, um, repairs have actually been done. And he can maybe sign off on that as a house inspection. So it's kind of a hybrid where the write-off is done by day, but the landlords can basically self-inspect according to our checklist and do themselves. according to our checklist and do themselves. That would save them a lot of money as well. You would have like a higher energy of those offenses. That some would require that they could do their own inspection versus some that would have to be seen by they, well, all of them would have to go. And I mean, if, if we get one to obviously of um, anything nefarious going on, we would implement very high violation fees to not let that happen again. I mean, we, we can start off with the benefit of the doubt. Start of trusting that they wanna do things the right way. It's just a high, I mean, it's just an idea, you know? And until, until they prove not trustworthy, you know, then, but that, that might be an idea or even, even a combination. We can have a couple of local inspectors maybe that they'll sponsor the home certificate, which also is not very expensive at all. It's, it's like, I mean, the ones I looked at were like about four hundred dollars or whatever. And, um, you know, if they auction, cause we have how many landlords on that list?
Lots.
A lot. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
They auction five homes or whatever. They, they could sponsor five home inspectors. Seriously, there's so many of them. So we can even have a combination, you know, if somebody doesn't wanna take the responsibility on themselves or they're nervous about doing the checklist themselves, maybe we would have a couple of firemen who are certified and neutral and, um.
I think it went real well to, I mean, we only had one person, unfortunately. But, um, I think he was real receptive to the suggestions you made and that we talked about.
And they still have the primary number of rentals.
All right. Any other questions on that one? That was just kind of discussion, but thanks you guys. Did a great job.
And I think the other thing on the policy that, um, we just wanted to clarify or whatever, is that the, the licensing was annual. But the registration per per room or whatever it is, per location was a one-time fee, okay, right?
Right.
That was the one thing that we
Okay.
That they had brought up that we wanted to.
We'll need to check with them. Yeah. So I'll ask him tomorrow. He calls on Tuesday.
Sure. Do that.
So then, are you all in agreement to change for the inspections from two years to three years? Are you all agreeable to that? If I talk to the city attorney tomorrow?
I am if they're doing this rotation.
Okay. Right. So.
More manageable, you know?
And if that's what it's takes to get it, you know, get that long list accomplished too, you know, there's a lot of them. So. I mean, he, um, Father Coolidge, I'm saying.
Yeah.
He had given us like a, uh, like an idea of when he had divided it up. And I think according to like his proposed plan, it would take, I think, three years, wasn't it? I, I. Yeah.
Well, I think it would. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I mean, the truth is, and it might go quicker, you know, if they, if they do get some local home inspectors or if they do that self-credit checklist or whatever. I mean, zone one might be done within a month, whatever it is, but if we see it takes two years, we can always amend that, but, but it, it gives them some movement, some pushering, I think. And not to feel the pressure if they have properties holding in one zone, you know? You guys have done the work. So you you know, know about it, know, and picking the, how does?
You want a motion on that or is that?
Um, no, I, I think I need to go back to the city attorney and give him your recommendations and see what he says and drafts for you to look at.
Right. And have it divided into two zones possibly.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we still need to hopefully hear from Hershey. You know, that they form a committee would be very good. And then also we have, we have a point of contact in the committee that we can collaborate with, speak with and support and keep talking.
Now, you've ordered the list, you know, right?
Yeah.
Well, and maybe they'll start making some changes.
Yeah.
Now, they know we're looking at them, you know?
And then I wrote something down. Can I just?
Sure.
Okay. So our recent proposed policy changes for the housing, for the residential housing code um, prioritizes, um, and hopefully will positively impact public health and safety for our community. But I would like to discuss, um, extending similar considerations, not what we have. And bring to the table the concern that local businesses are facing. Um, that challenge their rental properties, including lack of inspections and rising costs, which are impacting their sustainability and our local economy of which they are vital. So I would like to suggest that we explore the possibility of establishing guidelines or an ordinance for rental properties used by local businesses focusing on fairness, safety and support for our local economy. And some initial suggestions that I would like to discuss either tonight or as soon as our housing policy is passed are establishing a voluntary or mandatory inspection program for commercial rental properties to ensure they meet basic safety and health standards. Consider implementing rent control or stabilization measures to protect businesses from sudden and drastic rent increases. Lease transparency, requiring landlords to provide clear written leases outlining terms, including rent increases and responsibilities. Perhaps establishing a funded program to support local businesses with resources or financial assistance for rent-related issues. And that we as the city engage with local business owners, landlords and property managers to gather input for potential policies. I think we've addressed like the residential rental, but our, our local businesses really need a lot of support and therefore into the cracks and so I think we need to prioritize our local businesses and our economy as well.
Very good. Very. Okay. Great job. Okay, let's go on to fourteen then, uh, water fluoride. Uh, you know, last month we, uh, brought it up discussion wise and it's still kind of there, but, uh, so did you guys get a chance to take a look at what, uh, Zach had written up and, uh, and, uh, things like that? And so, uh, let's, let's discuss that a little bit. And you have. Sure. Yeah.
Zach, what do others talk about?
It's kind of a mixed bag. Manona just got rid of it. They're in the process of getting rid of it. Sometimes you did some dumb. I think more down, they're starting to go away from it.
Okay.
Apparently there's been like seventy cities approximately that have opted out. Hopefully.
Yeah.
It seems like it's doesn't do much good anyway. I mean, it's.
I'm not a dentist or doctor.
I know, but it's in point three to point five.
Yes, it's naturally in the water.
Yeah.
You know, we're not treating it to much higher minds, but.
And we get it so many other places as it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're getting tons of fluoride and lots of other products.
Nearly causes over six thousand dollars for the fluoride.
Yeah, that's probably just, I didn't, I don't.
That was just.
That's probably just the chemical.
It was. Yeah.
Then you got it running your pumps, exhaust fans. We gotta test it every day, we gotta every month send a test into the lab, which is probably a decent hundred dollars a month.
Is that a deductible price too or?
No, then we just send down the, um, water.
How much of that yet, have you got on hand? Fluoride?
Um, maybe three months worth left right now. I mean, when we get it, it's like twice a year we get it, like six months.
Does the, does the Iowa Department of Public Health have to? Is there approval required for us to stop the fluoridation?
They, we don't need their approval. We just have to notify them that we did. The DNR, this, DNR, they does not require you to use fluoride. So it's just the Iowa Department.
They just have to be notified. We don't need.
Yeah. They rec, they recommend it. Just.
So drinking water is such a little piece of it. What's, what's the research, you know, like? How does fluoride in the water affect the grass or, you know, what other uses we use it for? Is it hard on machinery or anything like that?
Um, I guess I don't personally know the, I mean, it is an acid. I mean, I don't think point seven is going to, you know, cause any major problems or anything like if it was, like if I took the fluoride and dumped it on something, then yes, it would be all right through concrete, but.
And then human beings, it's a chemical. Even that little amount of the staying in our bodies is.
Yeah, you can wear like gloves and.
No, it doesn't wash. Yeah. Not all of them.
Like if it's a fluoride mix feeling, it's dangerous to breathe. I guess, I think it's dangerous to anywhere, but like, I mean, I've not had like, you can say I've had like a bad spill or.
Well, you've got, you've got aeration, right? When you.
Yeah, there's a vent that runs.
Yeah.
I don't know. It runs so many times every hour to, you know, reventilate the room. So. I mean, like there's constant electricity just running that ventilation all year long. So.
Can I add just one thing for you guys to consider? The poverty of our community and me, I don't mind kind of looking at some studies, but how like for us? Maybe we don't need it, right? Like we're all.
Crystal, come on up.
Oh, okay. I'm just wondering if before a decision is made, we can take into account the poverty in our community and where folks are coming from and the fact that we don't have a dentist in town. Most people in our community don't have dental insurance or see a dentist.
I, I did a lot of research and I did consider, especially undeserved communities. But, um, first of all, topical fluoride has a much greater benefit in systemic and national education. Well, they, they're good, they are getting toothpaste and they can get toothbrushes and we have the I smile.
The kids get it. Yeah. The adults don't though. The I smile is only in the school for the kids.
But, and the other thing also is that the dentists, and I know cause I'm a Medicaid recipient and my children are, the dentists are not seeing us anywhere because they get paid.
Well, not see it anymore.
No, the dentists are not, the dentists do not see Medicaid. I can promise you. Whether it's Delta Dental, I mean, and you know, from that I smile program or is that what it's called?
Yeah, I smile.
Yeah. And the truth is, there's a very small incidence of greater cavities once you opt out of the fluoride water. But we, we got like an email also with tons of information. People are getting, um, the systemic fluoride in their systems.
Right.
Way more than they need from tons of other things.
Sure.
That the lower income community, they're not relying solely on the water for their tooth health. They're really not.
Yeah. It's just very different for us than before.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. And, and also like the, and the amounts that we're taking in already, it causes also or there's a possibility of it causing more health damage to those undeserving or not undeserving. Sorry, not underserved.
Under served.
Yes. I, I did look into it. It's a hundred percent. Yeah.
And it says, uh, the average one percent of the debt holders actually use their drinking and cooking. Yeah.
And we're kind of a different animal because we, we're a smaller town, but we pump so much more water with agri, we have water once a while than more flex is using three hundred plus thousand gallons a day. So we're treating all this water, but really for no point. I mean, I think in there like sixty-four dollars worth of, uh, fluoride was actually used in drinking or, you know, cooking water. So.
I don't see any problem with getting rid of it.
Should we take a vote tonight?
Yeah.
I move the, uh, if not at the.
When the motion is their second?
I would second that.
Do I have to wake Larry? Yep. There's, did you hear that motion, Larry?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say no? All right. Thank you.
And this will be like, I think it's a, I don't know the exact process, but it takes several months before you can actually quit using it.
Okay.
You know why use up our supply?
Sure.
Do you have to have a change your water permit then with?
Yeah, notify the DNR that we're doing it and, um, I would pardon how. I think, I feel like it's a three-month window you gotta.
I wanna say it was ninety days.
What'd you say?
I think it's ninety days.
Ninety days. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Well, good. Well, yeah.
Yeah, we should, that's, yeah.
Can you stick around for one more second? Can we skip something so I can ask him something?
Sure.
Can you skip to number sixteen next?
Okay.
Go to sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So do you, are you in on this sander spreader? I mean, do you know much about it? Okay. So in our packet, we, we have this deal from Erdman's about the, um, sidewalk improvement and finishing up and everything, the final seating. If this new sander spreader does everything that was talked about in the paperwork that it can do with that, in fact, save us most all of that twenty-eight hundred for seeding and maybe some of that mulching cost of what's left to do out on the trail instead of having to hire it done.
It's in the bid.
It's in the bid.
Yeah. It's, it's there already, Lori.
Yeah, we approved that contract.
You already approved the contract, so.
But you can't.
One problem I was getting at, like you'll have to use a Harley rig this spring to rework it all, but we don't have one of those, but.
Yeah, I was, I guess, yeah, I just seen like it was broke out with mulching seed and sediment control.
I have a question about the sanding too now. Does it work more efficiency than, efficient than the one I was following the other day?
This would go, like it's, it goes with our tool cap. So you just hook it out of the front and scoop sand and it spreads it. So like right now on the walking trail, we have, we can't drive the truck down the trail with sand. And so after this last, you know, it was like super icy.
Okay.
And other than walking around with buckets and throwing it, there's no really way.
So you're gonna do it on the trail?
Yeah, like the walking trail is mainly where it'd be used. Um, yeah. Cause that, that new walking trail, it's it's gonna be fun if we get, keep getting more snow the way we're getting. It's already getting really hydro, so we've got about plow every day.
So this is the new one?
Yeah, be the new one and then the trailer goes all the way to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next one.
All right.
So off topic, but does that new trail have, do we have enough easement or right of way with that trail to keep chucking snow off of it without?
They've been doing it.
Without being anybody's.
Well, I, I would think it would work, but like we said, when you put a walking trail in the bottom of a ditch, what do you expect? You know, so.
I got stuck in it.
Yeah. It's.
Not supposed to get, you know, putting half the snow in the first month.
Yeah.
But you know, and then tomorrow they're talking fifty mile an hour wind. Oh my goodness, that thing will be just plump full again. Uh, but.
Can you get it from both directions? So it might be out west one day and it's hot and you can't snow pants both sides.
When it's open or are they using it?
Yeah.
I, I don't go that way.
Yeah. Yeah. I've walked it.
Have you? Okay. Good.
Found my way back.
Okay.
So like, yeah, the standard, I guess, I don't know what the cost is.
It's four thousand.
I mean, one person falling, you're ready to play.
No, it's, it's.
I know, I thought the implement or the, the tool itself was a good.
Yeah. And like you say, you can actually use a self loader, right?
The bus part.
Drive right into the.
Yeah.
That's cool. And a leveler and so it doesn't fog up and.
Yeah.
No, I thought that was a candy device.
Make a motion?
Oh, yes. I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the purchase request for the sander spreader.
Correct. Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who say no? Thanks Zach. Okay. Well, back then to, uh, fifteen engagement letter hardened urban renewal termination of the South Urban Renewal Plan.
Yeah. So I'm working with the attorney, um, to redo the South, which would be Clayton County Tiff District. So that district has expired, so it's no longer valid. So we need to terminate it. And then we're creating a new district, which we're gonna call the Harden Tiff District, and it will include your housing development. So, um, it's a tool that we're hoping to use to do some financing or rebate incentives to a developer. So we're just kind of beginning that planning process. So, um, termination, new Tiff District Engagement Letter was six thousand five hundred, I think is what their cost is for the legal.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah.
So that's what it entails.
Hundred, fifteen, six, fourteen, fifteen.
Thousand five hundred.
Can you explain? Where do you concise some of it?
About tip?
Yeah.
All right. So ti- tip is a tax increment finance and a lot of cities use it for economic development. So there's residential tip So there's residential TIF and there's commercial industrial TIF. So all of the TIF districts we currently have are expired. We are drawing no more TIF because our debts paid off in all of our districts. So commercial industrial TIF, you can use it for um, any type of infrastructure in a commercial, like you're putting in roads, streets, whatever. TIF begins when you get your first TIF dollars in. So when you incur the debt, you've got the district, you incur the debt, you are paying TIF to pay the debt for like water, sewer, whatever you decide in that district. Um, in a commercial and industrial, it's twenty years, okay? In a residential, it's ten years. The TIF is only good for ten years. So in a residential district, which is what we're doing for Harden subdivision, we can use that money to put in water, sewer, streets, or, or we can use it to give a rebate back to a developer that incentivizes them to maybe develop. So you're rebating some of their taxes, right? Um, again, it starts when you get your first TIF dollars in. So when you think about like a residential, it probably doesn't grow enough to pay large amounts of debt because it's gonna take you quite a while to get homes developed where the values are growing, so you're accumulating the money. So you probably would try and think of other options to finance like water, sewer, streets. You know, you're looking at revenue notes or you're doing general obligation notes. Um, but that's the difference between the two. And because this purpose is for residential, we have to use, we have to establish a residential TIF for the housing development. Now, like say we wanted to TIF Norple, or Ziegler, say we wanted to, we talked about that. Um, we don't want to TIF something until we're ready to actually do something, or that we know that we have something going on. So we talked about extending a TIF district north and getting out to that well site. We would have to get permission from the county because some of that, that is not in our city limits. We would also have to get permission from the landowners from the where our city limit ends to that well site. So we're not at that point yet because we're not looking at doing anything with that transmission line. And we really haven't had anything with Ziegler wanting like incentives or anything like that. So we just thought at this time with the cost of it.
There's a time limit.
Yeah, there's a time limit. So we're just, unless we were to know of something, then you would move forward and establish those, those TIF districts to be able to get those incentives. Does that kind of answer? Okay. So anyway, we're, we're looking at the Harden, we're starting to have these conversations. Um, I visited with Maggie Berger Spear Financial last week. We talked about the TIF. She's willing to come in and, or do a Zoom and show me like a module, like if you build X amount of homes, what would that, what would that do for the TIF? What would you generate? What could you maybe offer for rebates? She has like a spreadsheet that she could help put those scenarios together. She said at no cost, you know, as part of their service. So that's something we'll be reaching out with her and talking to her more and.
Would Ben Garrett be part of that conversation?
Ben Garrett has been very involved. So he currently is reaching out to all the uh, list of businesses that we gave him to see if they would be willing to come to a meeting and talk about what their needs are for their businesses as far as housing. So I think that's what he's starting with.
Yep.
That's great.
So we've, we've sent him the list of businesses that we think should be at the table, and he's working on scheduling those meetings, so.
Yeah.
Wheels are getting in motion, folks.
So you need a motion for that sixty-five hundred?
To approve the engagement letter, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the engagement letter for the Harden Urban Renewal Plan and Termination of the South Urban Renewal Plan at that sixty-five hundred dollar fee.
All righty, second?
Or, I'm not sorry, not six, did I say sixty-five hundred or did I say six hundred fifty?
No, you said six thousand five hundred.
Okay, sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. All right, that's good. Okay, let's go on to item seventeen, then the consent agenda. It's in there you guys wanna pull out of there.
Why does anybody want that card?
Not for sure, but I got, I was telling Mayor Darcy today, there's a town interested in it and, well, we got a response anyway, and then a dealership over by Des Moines, and then another dealership over Prairie that they did not, well, they're supposed to contact me. I haven't heard back from them yet, but they're, they're gonna be calling, so. Yeah.
Still working on it.
How far is the town?
Uh, uh. It'll make it, it's a same county. Yeah. Some there.
They gotta come to it.
I'm sure it would. Right.
Any, any, any numbers?
No, they just emailed me, want to know what more information on what the bid was or if they're taking bids in the minimum. And if it comes equipped and, I said, everything but the computer and radio.
Is that P D or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we give a motion to accept. I'd make a motion, wait, a little bit.
Nope.
You can see her go speedway some by.
All right, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
I think Brett Sanders.
All say no. All right, thanks you guys. So let's go on to item eighteen, the resolution for money to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bill.
Okay, second? Are we ready, Darcy?
Warren?
Yeah.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yeah.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, public comment. Crystal, you got anything more? You're the only one back there.
Community resource fair was cool, it was yesterday. It was okay. I mean, it was cool, you know, it was cold and it had snowed, so um, I think we had probably almost twenty families and we had some some senior citizens were struggling on their own. But everybody came one way with like piles of winter clothes and jackets and books and.
I've got light bulbs. I have a ton of these light bulbs, by the way.
Really?
Yes, from Monishie County Energy District slash Almackee Energy District, so we could see if you want some. Um, so yeah, lots of things giving away information, connection paid, you know, but it was pretty cool.
Where'd all the blankets and stuff come from?
Um, Linus Foundation.
Oh, Linus.
And we'll be giving away the rest of them through the library.
Good. Geez, mayor's, I got anything much? Well, I gotta thank you guys for running again for your position and winning. That's good, that's, you know, that's not, we, you find out, don't you? Every once in a while, you gotta make some tough decisions. You know, and, but that's part of the job, you know, and uh, we'll move from there, but yeah, thanks for doing that.
Thank you for accepting.
Yes, right one too.
Yeah. As I said, nobody said I was really sane, so.
Well, that's good though.
Half-assed creep. All right, I, I'm done. So council comments, you guys got anything?
Um, one question, and I probably should have asked the street guys now, they're. Um, so the end of my street, like right across from Dick and Sandy is probably the pine trees, probably, I don't know if they belong to the city or if they belong to
They.
Raco, but those branches hang out over the street to the point the sand, or the snowplow truck cannot get too far down without banging into either the sander or the, the cab. And we've cut our tree back considerably. I think those branches need to get cut, and I don't know who they rightfully will up, needs to be done by, but they gotta get done.
Normally, those guys, you know, if they see a problem, they'll go take care of it.
Well, in the past, they've always backed down our dead end so that they didn't plug Sandy and Dick and I in. And because of those.
And then Fallow actually left the snow in front of Sandy and Nick.
Right in front of their trifway.
They do that to me every time because it's open.
No, the, the end of the street pile, not, not the driveways.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, but like I said, in the past, they've always backed down and then pushed it all towards Raco's trees. But I think they can't back down without hitting those branches.
Well, normally they just go out there, whack them down.
They're pretty big.
Yeah.
So yeah, they should be, they may need a saw.
Well, yeah, all right. Anything else?
Press this, you can give us, I was just looking.
Yeah, that's for your information tonight, yeah, your budget.
Calendar, right?
Yep.
But I mean, you'll tell us.
Yeah, I'll tell you for sure.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor say aye. All say no. We're out of here. Thanks, everybody for coming.